Let's take a moment and pray for guidance in this country and pray for those that are less fortunate, just, Mary Head, for just a minute.
Thank you very much, and we'll officially call the meeting to order, I believe it's seven o'clock, and officially welcome all of you, I don't see any new faces tonight, I don't believe, all experienced people here that have come to, again, enjoy the evening. Let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag on my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, consideration of the agenda as presented, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we postpone item number 10. Commissioner Fletcher is not here, and this is his item, and it is not time-sensitive. So I think he should be here for that item.
If we're gonna remove the 10, then we might want to postpone number 11 to the same time, because they're both related to each other.
Yeah, that's, either way, it's fine, yep.
Okay, is there a motion to approve, I guess the motion was to amend the agenda, gentlemen, is that right?
Yes.
So the amended agenda would be take off number 10 and number 11?
And reschedule for next, next meeting, yes.
Is that a motion?
Well, I'm trying to get it straight.
Yes, I have a motion, yes, that is, I said it's a motion.
Okay, the motion is to take number 10 and number 11 off of tonight's agenda and place them on next month's regular seven o'clock meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no, we stand approved as amended, and now number five, a possible approval of the minutes for the special meeting of August the first. I'm gonna ask the possibility of a motion to accept all these minutes at the same time, is there a motion to approve A, B, C, and D?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, number six, comments on agenda items, my little assignment here is to read the public comment signup sheet, and there's no one signed up, so we'll move, this meeting's going fast. I guess we're number seven, so all of you that hurried up to get here possibly are gonna sit and wait while we possibly go into an executive session, Madam Clerk, would you...
Executive session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 1433181183, to consult with the attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is to go into executive session?
Second.
Second discussion here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, Madam Clerk, bear with us. Okay, let's get back into regular session if I have a motion to do so.
So moved.
And motion, Ms. Eisenhower and Mr. Kaiser, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are back in the regular session, and we are now, unless somebody knows something I don't, we're gonna hear from Chief Wally Lane.
Good evening, everyone. Fortunately, it remains fairly quiet on the island, although we still have, as most of you that live here know, a fair number of visitors still. It'll probably remain that way through November, I'm guessing. There've already been a few attempted break-ins, nothing extreme so far. Obviously, it is the season to look out for each other. If you see something that looks suspicious, don't hesitate to call. Let us figure out whether it actually is or not. If it makes you feel uncomfortable, give us a call. The one H B went off, I believe fairly successfully. No major complaints, as usual, there were one or two folks that had a problem with runners being on OBW, but, I mean, nothing that we can't work around, and I think the meeting's already been held, kinda like a debriefing from the past one, to make the next one better, so it should be even better next time. And there were about, I believe, twenty-two hundred people, thereabouts, that participated, so not too sad. Not really any major disruptions, I don't think, to traffic as a whole. And the bridge was only closed for like thirty minutes, and it was fairly early in the morning, not a huge problem. Traffic's just staying fairly active, I don't know if everybody's paying attention to that still or not, but, staying fairly active, there's still a couple of systems out there, both of those gonna hang it hard right and go away from us, fortunately. Unfortunately, we still have about a month of those kinds of things to be paying attention to, so hopefully everybody has a plan in place should something occur. We're cautiously optimistic that it won't at this point, and we've been really lucky up to now, so hopefully we'll stay that way. One other thing, and that is, as most of you probably know, there was a break in the Colonial Pipeline, which runs gas north and south of the East Coast. That's been within the last week, and some stations have had some disruptions in their ability to provide gas during that time. Most are getting at least partial deliveries still. In the area here, we're fortunate in that we're still okay at this point. That break is supposed to be bypassed by the end of the week, and the flow is supposed to resume by then, and so within the next week or so, things should be back to fairly normal. I say all that to say this, Exxon still has gas, if you need some, go ahead and get it now, and be safe, guys, I'm sorry later on.
Is that Marathon?
Marathon and the Exxon, both in our airspace, still have gas. So hopefully, that'll be resolved by the end of the week, and within a week or so, everything will be back to normal. All that being said, be glad to answer any questions, just then.
Chief, since, if we should have a mandatory evacuation, that could be at this point, and you told us that now the law says everyone must leave, since we have no longer the ability to activate the emergency teams, as many of us have participated in over the years, how are we going to notify people that they're absolutely going to be closed this time?
Well, I mean, during this, during this particular time, and this is all fairly new to all of us, but during this particular time, the plan is that between the police department and the fire department, we will make the notification. Will it stay that way forever? I can't say that, but I mean, at this point, based on the way the law is, and based on liability issues, that's the best way we can ever come up with how to handle the situation. And realistically, I think between the two departments, I think we'll be able to cover it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else?
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Hewitt, you wanna lead us in discussion in regards to the central reach project?
Sure. Back in March, the board kicked the central reach project into high gear, and since then, our intent all along was to, if possible, initiate a beach nourishment project this winter. Since then, we passed a budget that was necessary to be the holding cell, if you will, for all the actions related to the central reach project. We've secured the interlocal agreement with Brunswick County that will, in effect, act as the backstop for the financing on the project. The municipal service district has been established, and now the bid solicitations have gone out and been received, the engineer is here tonight and can, can talk about the certification there. So where we are tonight is that we're ready for the final push from the administrative side of it, to make bid award, approval, budget amendment, the financing award, and also the bond order that's necessary to cement as the master document for the project. The intent is to, those items have been pre-coordinated with the debt management section of the local government commission, and are set forth for your consideration tonight. With us in attendance are our financial consultants, Andrew Carter, bond counsel from Harper Poe, Scott Leo, and the, the project engineer Fran Way from ATM. The intent here is to make these final documents or prepare them for the local government commission meeting on the fourth of October, with final closing with PNC Bank on the twelfth. All the administrative documents are prepared for your action tonight, and the final action on the four items are the last things, the last hurdles that you, as the local governing body, must do before the final package can be considered by the local government commission on the fourth. And those four items are, as recommended by the consultant engineer, are the award of the bid to Weeks Marine in the amount of fourteen million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. That award will provide for the construction of the full project, less about forty thousand cubic yards, which I understand is well within the design tolerance of the bid package. The corresponding budget amendment, based on the terms that we've been offered by PNC Bank, the, the actual rate that we've been offered is a hundred and thirty-two basis points lower than what we set the budget up for, and so the necessary funding required for that, the increased funding, is four hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. The terms that, and that increased funding will take the full borrow of the bond up to twelve million dollars, and that's at two point one eight percent for ten years. We had previously anticipated that that rate was going to be three and a half percent, and in effect is, over the life cycle of the, of the debt services, a savings of about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. The bond order, which of course is the master document, and provides the administrative infrastructure for the deal, that would need to be approved, the authorization is for the issuance of twelve million dollars in special obligation bonds for the central reach project, and the important piece of that is, is it specifies which state revenues, town building fees, and the Brunswick County interlocal agreement funding as the source of repayment security. Also, lastly, the bond issuance resolution, that is the document that accepts and authorizes private sale of the bond to PNC at two point one eight percent for a ten-year term.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Hewitt, is there a...
Yeah, I have a, maybe, a question or, so this does not include the attorney's fees, they're covered?
The total program is fifteen million dollars, and the construction line is the fourteen million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. The toto, the total program is the fifteen million dollars.
Is the total fifteen million, okay. So, and then the question is, you know, is a positive budget impact of three twenty-seven, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars?
That's, that's over the life cycle of the, the ten years, what we would have, it would have costed us, as opposed to what the lower rate will actually not cost us.
So what's the, for the current budget, what's the impact? Sixty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars?
The, the debt service, the anticipated debt service this year would be lowered by about sixty thousand dollars. But I'm, I'm, I'm not recommending that, that you cut that out, because there are still unknowns associated with specifically procurement of the easements, and we don't know what, what, where that'll end up at. What, of course, that, that fifteen million dollars, that is the, the threshold, and we'll intend to operate within that. Should there be additional savings, you know, that we don't have to spend money on surveying, we don't have to spend legal fees up to the fifteen million dollars, I would, I would recommend, and we'll come back to the board, to reallocate within the program budget, if the opportunity presents itself, that we can put more sand on the beach, that forty thousand dollars, that's, that's forty thousand cubic yards.
Cubic yards, right.
But, but I will, I will bring that back to you, and, and if, if that opportunity doesn't arise, it doesn't arise, and...
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manager, I'm looking on some of the supporting documentation that ATM submitted, and so the four hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine sixty that we're, we're increased, being asked to increase the budget by, I see that's for FEMA mitigation funding?
That's, that's actually, the, the four, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is FEMA funding, and when we set the budget up, we had, we pulled, we subtracted that out from the twelve million dollars, and only were anticipating eleven million, five hundred thousand as bond funding, so when I said that the lower rate actually saved us three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, that wasn't quite right. The, it, the borrowing twelve million dollars at two point one eight percent saves us three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, over borrowing eleven and a half million at three point two five. I, that's, that's unheard of for, in my world. Most of the time, borrowing more money costs you more money, but not in this circumstance, because the rate came in so favorable.
So are we talking about a net, so we save three hundred and some thousand due to the interest difference, interest savings, we're increasing the budget by four forty-seven nine sixty, so it's a net increase of one ten roughly? Also, we received another bid that I understand was not a qualified bid, because it was, the source of sand was not within the permit for central reach, is that correct?
Well, I don't know if, if, if you could call that a bid, because it doesn't rise to the, to the, to the, to the criteria contained in our bid solicitation, as much as I'd construed to be a proposal, but...
I just bring that up, because we've gotten, I've received comments from the public inquiring, you know, why, why aren't we considering that bid, so there's probably some education that needs to happen on, rightfully so, because it was significant savings, but, maybe that's why it was a significant savings, but, bottom line, these were the bids that were submitted, and they were all submitted in accordance with the process, so we are selecting the lowest bidder. Do we have experience with these, with Weeks Marine, in terms of performance?
The town doesn't, but the Corps of Engineers uses them quite frequently, and coincidentally, and it may be a contributing factor to their ability to be the low bid, they're actually gonna be dredging the, the outer bar of the Cape Fear River, finishing up about the second week in November, so it's a relatively short sting down here that's gonna prob, is probably one of the reasons why we're gonna save on mobilization.
We would start, when's our start anticipated?
Fifteenth of November is our permit date.
Mrs. Eisenhower, you've been mighty quiet.
I'm good, I'm ready to go.
You got all your stuff together, then?
Yep.
All right, I'd, the chair'd like to hear a motion, if we don't hear a motion, we're gonna move on down the agenda.
If we don't have a motion to approve this, then we're not proceeding with the project.
Right.
For you commissioners to decide.
Do you want a motion on each individual one, or on nine as a total?
I think you can...
Well, there's the suggested.
We've got the suggested motion here.
You wanna do that?
I, I see them, I, I see the four being so closely knit together, that it makes sense to vote, to move the suggested motion, that contingent subject LGC final approval, I move we approve the bid award, budget amendment, bond order, and bond issuance resolution per items one through four above.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, official discussion, not inquiry, but official discussion. Any more?
We got our ducks in a row.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. And that is four zero with, with one absentee. All right, Mr. Hewitt, are we through with your subject matter there? On number nine?
Yes, sir.
And number 10, we're not gonna do anything, is that correct?
Correct.
Gone, and number 11's gone. Mr. Hewitt, you gonna give us the report?
Gladly, yes, sir. Just a few things, I learned today that Atlantic Telephone is going to be installing optical fiber here on the island, and evidently, at their August meeting, their membership approved a five-year capital plan that's gonna extend fiber to all of its business centers, increasing internet speeds up to a gig, which I believe now is like fifty to a hundred meg here on the island. Shalote, it's, this is the way I interpret this, Shalote is year one, Ocean Isle will be year two, and Holden Beach year, be year three, Bowling Spring Lakes, Leland be year four and five. They will install it in two installments in the off-season, so that we don't wanna, you know, be digging up in the right of way during, during tourist season, so it would be year three and four, in the off-season, and year three and four is what I understand. And it won't affect the telephone landlines. Right now, I don't know if anybody's interested or knows this, but Atlantic Telephone has copper lines in the ground now, and what, they won't be digging that up, they'll just be laying new, new fiber alongside of it, is what, again, that's subject to change, but that's the word that I got today. The request for qualifications on the sewer lift stations engineering services, that's out on the street, y'all, and is due back to us by the third of October, and, you know, depending on how that is, we'll bring that back to the board. Just wanna let everybody know, the water tower is going to be repainted this winter. The contractor is currently preparing, prepping for it, and it's gonna be this gigantic curtain thing that goes down over the top of it, but wanted to give you a heads up, when you see these two monopoles going up, we've gotta take all of the cell phone stuff off of the water tower and co-locate these hundred-foot tall monopoles next to the water tower, so it can be painted, so they'll go on the east and the west sides, and that's about what I know about that, but when you, when you see that happening, and there is not supposed to be any interruption in cell service, which is important here, especially with hurricane season going all the way through November. The boating infrastructure grant and the municipal sewage grant has closed out in Bridgeview Park, all of those reimbursements have been received. In case you didn't notice, the shade sales, which are the first installment of the Partif Grant, have been installed, and the next three takedowns will be the kayak launches, the picnic shelter, and splash pad sometime this winter. We're working through our scheduling on that. Got the reimbursements back in for our sand dollar bulkhead, thanks to the partnership with the Brunswick County Soil and Water CCAP program. No new information on new flood maps, have made inquiries of some independent insurance agents, thinking that, well, maybe I'm just not tapped in to the right, the right source, but that's the word from the insurance community also, which supports what we've been, you know, fed by the, the governmental bureaucracy.
And did that mean, if it's, if they're approved January, we're still looking June timeframe before they're implemented? I thought it's what we heard last time.
Yeah. There was discussion last month on the, I believe it was last month, on the need for letters on the Oceanside specifically, and it was a discussion item at the board. The, the good, the good that came out of that is we looked around and we went, the public... the public accesses aren't addressed at all. So we've, um, and not only were they not, didn't have numbers on them, they weren't addressed in the GIS nine-one-one system. So we've, we've, think that we fixed that. Just as soon as we get it back from GIS, we'll, we'll get it, we'll make sure that, um, the town's addresses are visible from the, from the Oceanside. Uh, the Corps has awarded a contract for this winter's North Carolina shallow draft inlets, and, um, those details will be forthcoming. I'm gonna be attending a pre-construction meeting, uh, with the Corps on Friday, and I'll have that information, um, um, back out to, to y'all. Um, all I get is feedback from the boating community complaining about the condition of navigation in Lockwood Falls inlet. It's, it's pretty full up, so we'll, we'll bring that back later. Uh, last three things are statistics on some of our recreation programs. Um, the tie-dye, that season's over. That program participation is up almost forty percent. It continues to grow from its inception, uh, several years back. Uh, we had twenty-seven hundred people, um, to participate in that this summer compared to last summer at just shy of two thousand. The coastal cleanup, the international coastal cleanup, uh, members from the Shalote River Power Squadron in Seascape, plus, uh, two Holden Beach families assisted in, uh, cleaning up the beach here. The number one form of litter, not trash, litter on the beach continues to be the world's biggest ash, ashtray, cigarette butts. That's, that's what it is. And, uh, let me piggyback on, on, uh, Chief Lane about Run Holden Beach. Had over a thousand runners, uh, to participate. Half of the, almost half of those actually compete in all four of the beach races, coming from forty different states, travel with a partner, more than one person. They stay more than a day, and more than half of them travel more than a hundred miles, to include some folks from Brazil this year. Like, and that's pretty much my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hurd. And because the Chief did a great job, Mr. Hurd did a great job, I don't have anything to add. Mr. Mayor, pro temp?
Uh, I concur. I have nothing further to add.
I'll follow. Nothing further.
Mrs. Eisenhower?
Oh, I'm gonna say something. No, I just wanted to, um, again, thank the town employees for all their hard work this summer. Um, there were a lot of people who came here for an incredible vacation, and, um, you handled it incredibly and made us look wonderful, and we appreciate what you did.
Mr. Congress?
Um, I wanna say that over the past few years, our Parks and Rec Department is, had an increasing, uh, effect on our town, a positive effect. Uh, the tie-dye is just one of them. The, uh, the Holden Beach Run is one. Um, the park across the street is another. Uh, I have to say that Christie has done an excellent job, and the Parks and Rec Committee that helps, that she supports, and so they support her. They, it's an inner, an effort by both parties, have done a wonderful job, and I wanna thank you all so much. It really makes the town look an awful lot better, and it really puts us in a good situation. That's all I have to say.
All right. General public, it's time for you to say what's on your mind about whatever you wanna say is on your mind. If you'll come forward to the microphone, give us your name and where your home is, and, um...
Uh, my name's Skip LaPique, and, uh, um, I live at, on Dunes Cape, in Dunes Cape, at three forty-two, ninety. I wanna talk about recycling. Just a minute. And that's okay. The question is, what's next? And I would encourage you, big probably, uh, that you all look at an alternative to the current plan, simply because I think there's like zero probability that anybody that rents our house will keep track of what day and what week they're supposed to get the recycle bin after. If, that's not what they're focused on. So, um, I just wrote some proposals down. I'll submit them to be in the minutes or something, but one of the, it would be nice if some of us that have to have three cans, you would require us to have one recycle bin instead of a solid waste can, and maybe you pick it up every week, s- you know, the same day, every week, something they can keep track of. The other suggestion I'd make, we looked at this about ten years ago, is getting people to get their trash out. Is see if you can get, um, waste industries to tag the bag, or the, the cans, you know, just with a sticker. Take it out Monday night, take it out whatever night you want it to go out, because these people aren't paying attention. So my, my fear is to come back at the end of the summer and have like, I don't know, three cans full of recyclables and never make it to the street. So it just, the, the system that's there now works fine. If you live here, you can keep track of it, I don't think. And every other week, every fourth garbage day is gonna work for somebody that's here for a week. So, that's it.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, who's next? Not everybody at once. Nothing? Well, if that's the case, then, uh, mister and misters and mids, commissioners, does anybody have a motion that we adjourn?
Still move.
Mr. Congress made a motion, adjourned.
A second.
Second. Any discussion, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for...